Good evening, everybody. I will call our meeting to order, our regular city council meeting for November 18th, 2025. Let's stand together and proudly recite our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you kindly call roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here. A report on closed session confirmation of reportable actions, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this evening with legal counsel and staff to discuss four existing bits of litigation with, that involved the city of Vallejo, plus one new litigation matter, American Canyon LLC at All versus city of American Canyon. Direction was provided to legal counsel and staff, but other than that, no action was taken. Additionally, the council met with legal counsel and staff to discuss two matters of potential or anticipated litigation, and again, direction was provided to legal counsel and no action was taken. And that's the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. Moving forward to proclamations and presentation, tonight we have a Pollock, Pole, Cole, Best in Governance Award presentation, and who will be doing the presentation?
I'll be giving some words, remarks first, Mayor, and then we have some special guests in the audience that are partners in helping us with this award. So the National Communities Survey is kind of like a customer service survey for our residents. We opted into the survey, we do it every two years, and back in last fall is when we completed the 2024 survey. And it's statistically valid survey, goes out to certain households in American Canyon, and then we actually open up the survey to everyone, once they're done with the statistical survey. And earlier this past summer, we found out that we were eligible and we're going to be receiving some awards. This survey is a benchmark against all kinds of cities across the nation. Several hundred surveys, several hundred cities of our size are all using the same questions of their community, and they ask about topics such as public safety, education, arts and culture, transportation, and just the whole gamut of public services that happen at local government. And so it's with, with great pride that we were able to announce earlier this fall that we were actually national finalists in two different categories. We were finalists in the public safety category and in the category of education, arts and culture, arts and culture. And so we actually did not win the public safety one, but we are proud to announce that we're the national champion for the education, arts and culture category. And so it's, that's really a great honor. Of course, we can't do all of this ourselves, and particularly in these categories, we have great partners. And so we invited some of our partners here to kind of share in the, in the pride with us. We have representatives from the Napa Valley Education, Napa Valley Unified School District, we have partners from the Chamber of Commerce, and also from the Arts Foundation, who really create the programs and systems and, and everything that our community enjoys in these categories. And so we wanted to share that with them. In fact, actually, the, the award came with just our name on it, and we actually didn't even think that was appropriate because of our partners and what they do to deliver in these areas. So we took the award and we reformatted it to make individual awards with them and us, really as a show of partnership. And so, you know, without further ado, Mayor, it'd be appropriate to invite our, our partners up here. We'll give them the awards, which are there at your desk, and we can take some pictures and announce who we have with us.
Sounds good. Will they come up? Can I have the presentations?
There are four, but three.
Oh.
Okay. And we're gonna come up. And we're gonna come up.
This is such an honor to be a partner with the city of American Canyon, and the great work only happens when we have a team to get behind it. So thank you so much. We know the city of American Canyon deserves the best, and when we work together, we can provide the best. So thank you so much for this recognition and our continued partnership. We greatly appreciate it at the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'm Eve Reiser, and proud president and representative of American Canyon on the NVUSD Board, here with my fellow trustee Lisa, who is incoming president, and the other representative of American Canyon on the NVUSD Board. And we're just grateful for the partnership, the programming that Valerie and the volunteers in the community bring to the students in collaboration with our school and our organization is just amazing. We're so proud of the opportunities that it brings to our students, and we were just hearing about the business, the mock business plans that Valerie is getting out of the students in her business program that she's doing at the high school. At ACHS, so just inspiring students and uplifting and supporting them to envision what's possible for themselves and their friends in the future. So just on behalf of the district, congratulations to the city of American Canyon, and thank you for including us in this recognition and the celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve.
Are you gonna say something on behalf of the Arts Foundation, Mark, or are you gonna be able to?
Apparently because our two board members don't want to make any remarks publicly. So on behalf of the board, which includes Councilmember Lamatina, we're grateful to be part of the project. We're here to help, and we just want to say thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you all. Moving right along, a public comment. At this time, I'd like to open public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk?
I have Jason Kishinev.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Jason Kishinev. I am the trustee at Napa College for Area Three, which is most of the people in this room. I've been asked to make a report, which I should have been doing all along, but work requires me to work most Tuesday nights. So prior registration at Napa College for Spring 2026 for continuing students, veterans, and low-income students has opened, and registration for all students, new students, begins December 2nd. Student housing is now open and space is available. The defunct solar field was in the news recently. This was built 20 years ago, and it was turned off because it was leaking fluid, and we switched to a fuel cell. We've been discussing whether to ask votes for, whether to ask voters for a bond. We were able to stop that, but expect that to be coming in two to four years. We are building a wine education center. Yay! Phase one was completed in September. Construction begins, I think, in the spring on phase two. We've partnered with Sonoma State and UC Davis for auto acceptance for students that Napa Valley Transit Authority, I can't remember if this was more than a year ago, but built a northbound bus stop so that there are now bus stops going in both directions across from each other. We agreed to rent our field to the Blue Note for a summer concert series. I'm not sure what bands will be offered yet, but I'm crossing my fingers for Skunk Funk, a local group. We now have Friday wine tastings at 5:30. On November 22nd, Napa Valley College Choral will be having a chorus, a concert. On December 3rd, at the student housing, the student-parent winter gathering will be having a showing of the Polar Express with Hot Cocoa for parents and students. On December 6th, a Reader's Theater presentation of A Christmas Carol. On December 7th, Napa Valley College Orchestra will be having a concert, as well as a Symphony Tierra concert. And on December 11th, we will be having a jazz ensemble concert. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Hugh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Hugh Marquez. I come to you because this last Veterans Day, we had a very good ceremony, and during that ceremony, I had a couple people come up to me and asked, wouldn't it be nice if we had our own community center? And while the gym used to be our community center, it is no longer our community center, and we are now having to rent it, borrow it, I don't know how, what the specifics are, but we're having to use it. And I come to the council to put a bug in your ear that as our development goes, we need to plan ahead before we don't have any space for it. So I'm asking that the council look into the feasibility of any future development, including a recreational center for our city that is ours, that is not rented from the school, that is ours. Hopefully that can be done in the future. The other thing I'm concerned about is we have gotten rid of all our recycle water distribution sites, and I'm hoping that, again, as our future goes, that we will implement some spots. I know I've talked, I've talked to Erica a couple of times about it, and, and I'm hoping that the council can direct whoever need be to start looking into making sure we get some. This past year, we had a mild summer, to say the least, but we are planning on getting, the plan is with climate change that it will be getting hotter. So while we had a, a, a week summer, I'll call it a week, it'd be good if we planned ahead and start figuring how we're gonna distribute recycled water to our community. At one point, we were, we had a vehicle that was coming around to people's houses. That's how we started it. And then we found, we had two spots. One was the plant, and one was where now our, our eco-center is, which was Public Works. I'm told that both of those, the eco-center says in the future, they plan on to continue it, but that the public, that the water treatment plant is now off limits due to things that have happened in the past. So I hope that the council will spearhead trying to look forward to getting some recycle water distribution centers out to our community, so citizens who don't want to use water will be able to get recycled water to water their plants. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh.
Sorry, I'm not sure about that last name.
Welcome, Alon.
Good evening. I'm Milan Alas, Ms. Napa County, 2026, and Mayor Pierre Washington actually selected me, and it was very wonderful. And one of the questions he asked was, besides him, who's the most influential person in my life? And I selected my mom, and she's over there, and so she raised me to have courtesy, kindness, love and respect, and she is a wonderful woman, and I'm really happy that she's here with me. And part of my community service initiative as Ms. Napa County is to be supporting the Make-A-Wish Foundation. That's very personal to me, as I was granted a wish, so this is a very big accomplishment for me to be standing up here and to be healthy and strong, and I'm very honored to be doing that. So we, my goal is to have Napa County raise enough to grant one wish, so that's about $10,000. And we're also recruiting for bilingual volunteers right now, because that is very important, as I don't think hope should be lost in translation. Thank you so much.
And we have Mialani Butte.
Hi, Mayor and Council. So this past Saturday, I was crowned Ms. Vallejo Tri-City Teen by Mayor Washington, he was also a judge, and my community service initiative is rebuilding together Solano County. It's an organization where we hand out free food and also carbon monoxide alarms to veterans, disabled and elderly in our community, as well as offering services such as rebuilding and refurnishing their homes for them. My goal with my community service initiative is to just spread awareness about the elderly and also get them the benefits and the services that they need and deserve. And I just want to say thank you, and I'm super excited to be representing American Canyon, Vallejo, Benetton, Fairfield.
I just want to mention real quick before, before you get to the next person, that it was absolutely a privilege to be selected as a judge for the event. There were some amazing competitors that you guys had, but you guys stood above and beyond all of them. I love the CSIs that you guys all have, and you guys will be really, really great representation, you will have the great representation that is needed in our community. So I thank you guys for at least even putting your foot forward and doing that. You showed confidence, you showed character, and above all, all the community services that you've done is, is just amazing. So I'm hoping that we could probably get more contestants in the future, but you guys did an amazing job, and, and I'm proud of both of you.
Thank you.
That was my last speaker card. I have no one online, so Valerie.
Hello, I'm Valerie Zizak-Maurice, President, CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to remind the community that we are currently doing our restaurant campaign, and for those of you that do not understand the purpose of the campaign, it is to create our local community to become regulars at our restaurants. We highlight their current menu, we do not add specials, it's everything they're currently doing, in hopes that you go to one of these restaurants, fall in love, and then become a regular. In American Canyon, we don't have a strong tourism community, so we really rely on our local community to patronize our restaurants and to keep them here. So if you haven't been following the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, please do so. You'll see the lineup. We're gonna run the campaign through February, and it's a great way to come out with your friends and family and have a great meal. You'll get a coupon into the raffle, which will then allow you to be a contender for a free bottle of wine and a $50 gift card. So if you haven't seen that, we call it AmCan Eats, and it's a great way to support local. I just wanted to let everybody know that the campaign is currently in progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. At this time, I'll close public comment and move on to our agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes, Council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. There are four items.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is public hearing. We have one item in public hearing, item number eight, that's American Canyon Building and Construction Codes Update. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Washington, members of the city council, and members of the public. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and those people that just left are just missing the best part of the agenda. I know what they're missing. Every three years, the state of California, through the Building Standards Commission, updates the building code, and this year is the third year, so we're looking forward to a new building code beginning on January 1st. If we did nothing, it would become effective in American Canyon and any other city. But the state does like us to adopt the ordinance, and it does give us the opportunity to have a few local amendments based upon our geography, topography, and climate. And every year, when this is done, we have the same amendments, they've always been accepted, people are used to it, and so we're bringing those forward. This time, as it was in the last time, we actually have fewer local amendments, because the code is actually changing in the direction of what we're already doing. And so I don't have a presentation for you. So just wanted to answer any questions you have. This is, has a companion with the fire code, I believe the fire board has already adopted. They're very much similar, and it's kind of a routine item, even though it requires a public hearing and an ordinance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for that. Quick presentations. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open up the public comment. Any public comment for item number eight?
I have no cards.
Seeing none, return to council for, well, we'll close, we'll close public comment, but I'll return to council for additional statements or questions or motions to accept the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025, next in order, an ordinance amending American Canyon Municipal Code Title 16 to repeal and replace the 2022 California Building Standards Code with the 2025 addition with local amendments, and repeal and replace the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code with the 2024 addition and related model codes with appendices and amendments as identified through express finding of local necessity.
We have a motion on the table. Can I get a second?
I will second that motion.
We have a second. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes.
And before we go to the next item, I would be remiss if I don't take the time, take a picture with, with our, our ladies in the crowd, with the, with the council. And I, I, you know, they, they came here unexpectedly, but I was, I was, you know, in awe when I saw you come inside here, so I, I would want to have the council come up and take a picture with the both of you. So I, I would want to have the council come up and take a picture with the both of you. Thank you guys for letting me do that. Next, we will move on to our business item. We have three business items. Item number nine, the Veteran Park Playground Replacement Project Contract Awards. And that will be the both of you, Ally and Erica.
It's a team, team project here. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, American Canyon community. Eric Allman-Spitze, Public Works Director and Director Alexandra, or Deputy City Manager, Alexandria Kada. This is a team project between Parks and Recreation and Public Works Department. This item is on the business agenda because we're literally reallocating funding from one CIP project to another and then wanted to present on another, delivery of another needed playground project in the city of American Canyon. My part isn't small, just wanting to award the contract to Miracle Playground and I'm going to let Deputy City Manager, Akeeta, take it from here.
Thank you, Erica. So yes, we're here to talk about the fund stuff. We, we wanted to put together a presentation and create that vision for you and, and have, give you a better sense of why we're asking for an increase in budget to be able to accommodate this playground replacement and resurfacing project. So we're currently talking about Veterans Playground. As you all know, this playground is not our oldest park. However, we have identified some challenges. This playground equipment is very difficult to replace when it's broken. The manufacturer is currently located overseas, so as you can imagine, trying to get a part and trying to get it in time when something breaks can be very challenging. And so my role as in Parks and Recreation, I work very closely with Erica and her team. And so we, we do prioritize these replacement projects, but not only on year of life, but also on the challenges that we face for replacement. And, and so this kind of rose to the top of our list to go into the next playground replacement. It's, as you can see, it's had a lot of life. It's been well-loved, but it's time for a refresh. Part of the direction that we receive from council is to look at all of our replacement projects with an eye of inclusivity. And what does that mean? Because that word is very broad. And we really align with Miracle Play Systems on how they redesign and imagine play spaces. So there's many different factors that go into this design project. We look at multisensory play experiences. We encourage all children to play. The littlest thing, we learned so much from the Northampton Playground Replacement Project that although wood fiber, which are those wood chips that you saw in the park, although they're classified as ADA, they're very difficult to maneuver when you have mobility challenges. And so then when we talk about all types of play, we're really looking from that lens. We want to allow greater accessibility, again, one of the main goals. We want to ensure kids don't get overwhelmed because we do have children that other, that have other cognitive and physical disabilities. And some of them have autism or, you know, speech problems. And so they sometimes need a break. They need a place to be able to go and get away from other children that may be annoying them. And then we want to create a welcoming social environment for all. And then there's other things that we think about. We think about the different types of social play, which includes solitary play, which is where you play by yourself, cooperative play, where you find a friend and you can imagine and, and listen and communicate with. And then there's parallel play, where you're not necessarily playing with a kid, but you're playing alongside them. You may be doing the same thing with them, but you're not really engaging with them. And then you have onlooker play, where you're actually looking and seeing what other kids do. And you'll see that's a lot when you have climbers or rope systems and you have younger siblings that are maybe looking at their older brother or sister and they're like, I want to do that. And then they're really wild and crazy and they climb to the top and it's extremely scary. I've had that experience. And then you have associative play. So these are all the different types of things that we look at when we are trying to design a playground. I'm sorry, I'm a Parks and Rec nerd. But we really, again, like I said, we've really taken on the but we're envisioning, as you can see, Neverland. Thank you for turning that off. So as you can see from this design, there's a lot going on. We did take Neverland as a theme and, because if you notice at all of our parks, we want them to be destinational experiences for play. You have Northampton, which is our all access, all access universal play experience. You have Via Bellagio, which is our bug park. And then you have Linwood, which is our mini city park. And so now this is kind of our Peter Pan park or our Neverland park. And some of the elements that are in here, we do, we did keep the swings. We felt that was an important element. We do have two traditional swings. We have a toddler swing and then we have an all-inclusive swing. We also incorporated the ten spin. So this is kind of, it replaces that traditional merry-go-round, but it actually has seats. So people who may need assistance can actually sit in it and can spin. And then we kept the ramp, ramping system up into the pirate ship. And then this lovely object off to the left-hand side is an ADA glider. So you can actually roll wheelchairs on it and it glides and it sways. A new feature that is a little different that I've seen in other parks pop up are what I'm going to call a hill. And so they're really engaging. It's probably not the proper word, but they're really awesome. They, they, it's about four feet tall and it has a rope system. And then you climb to the top and there's a slide that you can slide down. In some cases, kids don't even use slides. They just tumble and roll down, which is another way of playing. My daughter, for instance, likes to do that. And then we also have different other climbers. So we have like the butterfly, we have the, the chest, the starfish. We have some rocks, we have some ropes going on. So we really tried to think, play into that land and sea experience, like they're really being immersed into Neverland. You go on that ship, you're fighting pirates, you go in and you find that treasure and it's just really meant to really spark that imagination. Some important things to note here is we've really maximized the space in this park. As you can see from the outlines of all the equipment, we are required to have fall zones. And so each of those items cannot overlap, they cannot touch. They really have to be in their own little space. And we didn't want to overcrowd the park because again, kids like to run. They like to run and chase each other and play tag. So we wanted to also keep that free play available. So these are some of the play features in action. This is the ten spin. These are the hills. That is from another park that's within the Bay Area. This is the ADA swing. This is the butterfly and then the glider. So that's our presentation for you this evening and why we are requesting additional funds to be able to support this park. Thank you so much and we're here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Ally, for the presentation and Erica. Are there any questions from council? Clarifying questions? Seeing Vice Mayor.
Okay. Just a quick question on the, in reading the report, you're reallocating savings, I'm taking, from Northampton of 110?
Yes, sir.
So we saved some money on that project?
We did because we could not put a fixed structure. We had to do a shade sale structure, which is a significant cost savings. And yeah, there we are.
And I'll just raise this question. The shade area at Northampton, is there a way that we can put maybe more than one picnic table there? Is that in the game plan?
Purchase order was submitted today to add three new picnic tables there and I believe a new trash receptacle, so. There is still funding left in that that we'll close out once the project is completed.
I was going to say, and there's still all of that and 110 for Veterans Park?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Oru?
Yeah. Can we get the glide structure for the council chambers too, please? Just to make it a lot more interesting in here, I think. Listen, so great presentation. Thank you for that. I'm glad, I had not thought about our parks as thematic destination, so that's very creative. And I like that and, and I'm harking back to when my kids were younger, we would go to all the parks and just explore different structures and, and that was just fascinating for young kids. I guess I have a question too that's related. So I'm totally supportive of this and thank you for bringing it forward. But as we think about this, I think about Veterans Park, Veterans Linear Park. And I know that we're working with Parks Commission now to look at a Parks Master Plan. I'm assuming some of that space that's not properly utilized will be part of the master plan as well. And then the other thing I wanted to add, I guess as a council member, as a resident, as speaking on behalf of residents, over time, we'll add permanent restrooms to some of these places instead of porta potties. I know we have to find budget for that and I know we've done a great job of getting that and we're, got some out that are for Northampton and Silver Oak Park. So really happy about that. And we're also getting one at Wetlands Edge. So on our way, but this is one of those that is becoming more used, particularly with the skate park and the Veterans Park, permanent bathrooms along the way would be good. But can you speak to us a little bit about what, what's being discussed in that master plan while we're talking about parks right now?
Sure. Great question. We have started that process with the Parks Master Plan. We've done a lot of community outreach. That's mainly what we've been working on over the last couple of months. We did a community survey. We've done an open house. We've done, we've brought the presentation forward to our commissions and we've heard a lot of feedback. And so now what we're doing, we're compiling all that information and putting it together. And we've, as part of that process, we have identified potential future park locations. We have quite a few parcels of property that we know that we would like to put something there. For instance, Kimberly, Napa Cove, that parcel, and then Veterans Linear Park. So those type of properties, we're actually going to be including into the plan as potential future sites for these amenities that are being identified by the community.
And if I recall correctly, and this is to address the public comment that was earlier, we did give direction as a council to explore opportunities for a community center too, and that's going to be in the master plan.
Correct. So that's also, so that's kind of on a parallel path. So the council directed the Parks and Community Services Commission as part of their work plan for this fiscal year 2526 to investigate a revenue measure. On Thursday of last week, we'd had one step of a two-step process. Assistant City Manager Juan Gomez came in. He did some basic educational awareness around our general fund, where we stand today, how we fund Parks and Recreation, how we fund maintenance and how we fund CIP projects. That was really just to show that we've been investing a lot of time and energy towards the repair and replacement because that's what the funds we have. For larger ticket items, that's going to come, we wanted to also explain that for larger ticket items, like a gymnasium, a pool, athletic fields, that's going to require significant funding. And so that is actually going to go in December where we're going to be discussing all the different types of revenue measures that are out there. And we will be requesting for them to make a recommendation to council to bring forward in January.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Hello and thank you for the presentation. And I just really want to say that you really did listen to the community and what they wanted with the all-inclusive park. And I can't wait to, wait to see it and see everyone playing on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So now I'll open it up to public comment. Are there any public comment on item number nine? Hi, Beth.
Good evening, Beth Marcus. I just want to congratulate Ally. I think this is a great presentation. She did a great presentation last Thursday at the Park and Recs Committee. And I'm so glad that she's thinking or the city is thinking about ADA as well. Because we do have a lot of children here in American Canyon that have disabilities. And let's face it, we have a lot of kids here that need something to do. And I think this park is great. And as far as the Napa Cove one, you know, you could put it on Poco in Melvin Road. That's a bigger area.
Thank you, Beth. Any other public comment? Seeing none in the room, anybody online?
No.
Thank you. I'll close public comment and return to council for item number nine. Any additional statements or questions or a motion?
If there are no other additional statements, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution taking the following action. One, reallocating funds by reducing the Northampton Park Shade Structure Project, PR 23-0400, budgeted by 110,000 and increasing the Veterans Park Playground Replacement Project, PR 25-0400, budget from 515,000 to 625,000 in the Parks Impact Fees Fund, Fund 310. Number two, awarding a contract to Miracle Play Systems Incorporated in amount of $499,974 for the Veterans Park Playground Replacement Project, PR 25-0400, under Source Well Contract Number 010521 LTS. And number three, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute contract change orders up to the approved project budget.
We have a motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
And a second. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oru?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes, and thank you, Ally and Erica. Next on our item is item number 10, ratifying the 2040 General Plan for November 2025. Looks like it's going to be you, Mr. Cooper?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'll just have a couple of remarks and I'll hand it over to Director Cooper. This item is the ratifying of the general plan. The council approved our general plan in, in May, but there were some edits and there were some changes. And so I would think of this as kind of a final polishing before we put this on the shelf and then showcase it to everyone. So we heard the feedback from council and from, from the community and have done that kind of final brushing up and Brent can kind of talk to you about some of the details of that.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Mr. Brent?
Great. Well, thank you, council and members of the community. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. And just really pleased to present to you the camera-ready general plan update. Of course, it was approved in May and we wanted to highlight at that time that we've been listening to the community. And so that's why the general plan had red lines and changes so that you knew that it was a working document. And so we cleaned that all up and really glad to have that done. The council at the time wanted to consolidate the sustainable policies into an element. As we're looking at the general plan, there are a lot of sustainable policies. So we did consolidate many of them into a single element, but we really needed to highlight that there are many throughout all of the elements. Because if you think about the general plan, it's really our plan for a sustainable future that helps today's generation, but also benefits generations to come. I have a very brief presentation. Some of this you've already seen. When we do count up the number of sustainable policies in the general plan, we came up with 251, but it's arguable that there are many more. We had a discussion with the Open Space Act of Transportation and Sustainability Commission earlier or later last month and talked about these policies and mapping them. It's part of their program for this fiscal year and had a great discussion about it. And so as you can see in each of the elements, And, uh, so as you can see in each of the elements, there are, are quite a few, uh, sustainable policies. If you look through the general plan, you'll see a, a bright green icon of a leaf, um, to highlight which policies are the ones that are sustainable. And, uh, so it's, I, I hope everyone feels good that this is a plan for, for a better future from a sustainability perspective. The general plan, of course, is the Constitution of Development, uh, for American Canyon. And so as we, uh, come up with new plans, policies, programs, guidelines and the like, they all need to be consistent with the general plan. And so there's a line of sight consistency there. And so as we look at each of these things here shown on the, on the graphic, they all need to be consistent with the general plan. And so if you look at them as well, they will have a sustainable perspective just because of the, the policies that they flow from. There are a number of sustainable programs that are underway today, uh, some very important ones and many with our regional partners in Napa County and beyond. Um, we have the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan for Napa County. Um, that is planned to be brought forward, uh, at the beginning of the next calendar year. Uh, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority is updating, uh, the new bicycle and pedestrian plan into a consolidated active transportation plan. We have the Napa River Ecological Center, so we have, of course, nonprofit partners also furthering sustainability in partnership with the city, uh, on that beautiful site on the wetlands. And then we have, uh, the Subregional Shoreline Adaptation Plan that, uh, Norm Woods is spearheading a grant for, uh, working very hard. There's been a flurry of emails with our partners in Napa on that, uh, very exciting and looking at the way in which this town will adapt to sea level change. And then we have the Highway Twenty-Nine Project Initiation Document. I think if you look at the way the highway is today, there's nothing less sustainable than what we have now. And so I guess from that perspective, it can only get better. But the plan is very thoughtful and I think it'll become, uh, today, and one might argue, as a detriment in mentally with our community functions, uh, and turn it into a positive. So these are exciting things that are, that are gonna be forward in our city. Um, in addition, things that we're doing just locally, um, updating the new management plan, um, supported by policies in the general plan. And then the Parks and Community Services Master Plan that we've, or, um, Councilmember Oro already mentioned today. I think we're excited about that. And so, um, as we were having a conversation with the OSATS Commission about, so we're doing all these things, how do we keep track of them? Well, there is already, uh, an annual review of the general plan that we present to the council in the spring, along with the housing element annual review. And what we can do, it's a suggestion we had, and OSATS liked it, is, um, highlight sustainability as part of our general plan annual update. And that way we'll be able to keep track and show progress of what we're doing as a community to help further these sustainability policies. So our, we have a staff recommendation and that would be to adopt a resolution ratifying the twenty forty general plan dated November this year. I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, and I like the idea of the, um, addition of the green leaf icon. That's really nice.
That was our city manager's idea.
Oh, well then, thank you.
I can't discredit, uh, but I really like it.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. I like that as well. Uh, Vice Mayor Joseph? Couple of things. Thank you for the report and I, I agree that sustainability permeates everything, so it makes some sense to highlight it without necessarily assembling it all. I, I do like the Sustainable General Plan Policies Matrix, uh, that kind of pulls all that out into one place because it is handy to have it all there. Will that be like an appendix to the general plan? Or is that just a cool document that policy nerds will, will know and have in their hip pocket or?
Well, it's kind of thick for hip pocket.
That's true.
It, it, it actually is, is the general plan, so it's a cool document.
No, I'm just talking about the small matrix that identifies it.
The forty-eight page one?
Is that? Ah, okay. All right. Well, it won't be in my hip pocket. I'll, we'll go there.
We could reduce the font.
No, no. As we get older, we like big fonts. Um, the other question, I think it was Councilmember Oro brought up, um, whether we had the ability to swap out a lot of the stock photos with homegrown photos. Did we do a great job of that?
Well, I think we did.
Okay. I won't even argue with you then. Um, okay, I think those were my-
There are some blank pages, so photo- photography itself is not a general plan amendment.
Okay.
So it's not a difficult document to be able to, to add things. As our communications team is constantly taking stunning photos, I'm, I'm not opposed to stealing them and putting them in the general plan where they're appropriate.
Sounds good to me. And then since we're on sustainability, might I ask, and this might not be your question, but, uh, the status of the part-time person that we're trying to hire, how's that going?
Uh, yeah, thank you. So, um, uh, with HR, we've been working on, uh, product description, working on, sorry, uh, product description, um, job description, um, and looking at what the recruitment, uh, process is gonna be. We haven't announced the recruitment yet. Uh, we're still sort of batting around the idea of, of, you know, whether it's more of the internship, whether it's sort of that, what, best bang for that pay rate. So, uh, I expect, um, we probably will not get an announcement out. We, we might get it out before the holidays. We're sort of debating, uh, there may be some sense in getting out before the holidays, but, um, we do have staff away at the, at the conference this week. So maybe kind of first of, first of January when we get it out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other questions on council, at this time I'd like to open up the public comment for any items, for anything on item number ten. Seeing no, nobody in the room? How about online?
No hands raised online.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to close public comment for item number ten. Return to the council for additional statement questions or a motion accepting this resolution. If there are no other comments, then I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Ten-Five Next in Order, a resolution ratifying the twenty forty general plan dated November of twenty-twenty-five. Thank you. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Well, we have a second. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes, and moving on to our third and final business item, item number eleven, the draft artificial intelligence, AI, and data policy. Ally, we busy tonight.
That was to set the stage. Um, as an organization, we are, excuse me, that was wrong. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Probably should have started there. I'm here this evening to present the city's proposed AI and data policy and to seek your feedback and direction. Across our, across all of our departments, we are seeing individual staff begin to use publicly available artificial intelligence, also known as AI, tools as part of their personal workflows. This is informal and an optional use. Similar to other productivity tools, employees, um, to, employees choose to adopt. The city is not deploying a global AI organizational, um, policy. I mean, I, or, gosh. We're not trying to deploy AI organizationally. Um, rather, we're having employees, rather, employees are independently exploring these tools as they become more common. At this time, the city continues to rely on a wide range of existing data systems. While these systems have long supported our operations, we do not currently have a citywide framework that clearly outlines how staff should handle and protect city data. As AI enters the workplace, this gap becomes more visible. This proposed policy provides staff with clear expectations for safeguarding city data and establishes boundaries for responsible use of AI tools in the workplace. And it also ensures that staff can benefit from these technologies while maintaining the accuracy, security, and trust we are responsible for upholding. So AI, AI is no longer an emerging concept. It's already present in our daily lives and embedded within tools we use every day. Even without organizational deployment, platforms like Microsoft three sixty-five now include AI features by default, meaning staff will continue to encounter these tools in their day-to-day work. At this time, the city operates many data systems that store sensitive, mission-critical information. These systems represent significant investments and must be consistently protected across all departments. As technology evolves, ensuring the proper management and safeguarding of this information becomes increasingly more important. As an organization, we are open to new productivity tools that promote efficiency and support staff in their work. AI has the potential to enhance, enhance how employees manage routine tasks. However, as these tools become more prevalent, it's essential that staff understand how to interact with city data systems and AI responsibly. Protecting this information we store is fundamental to maintaining public trust. And this is why it's important to establish clear organizational-wide guidance, um, for our staff. So as you can see from the side, the, the city relies on a wide range of data systems, um, and this is only a partial view. Collectively, these systems support operations, service delivery, and internal workflows. They contain different types of sensitive information, including customer and employee records, personal identifiable information, which is also known as PII, Protected Health Information, which is also referred to as PHI, criminal ju- and Criminal Justice Information Services, which is known as CJSI. This also includes passwords, internal links, systems, and security information. All of this must ma- remain in authorized city systems and must not be shared outside appropriate channels. Protecting this information is both a legal requirement and a key component to maintaining public trust. While this data environment, within this data environment, AI can be used in a responsible and ethical way that aligns with this policy. Staff may use AI, AI as a productivity tool to assist with low-risk tasks, but human oversight is essential. Employees must verify accuracy and make sure that AI-generated content is appropriate before incorporating into any city work. This policy also requires that staff avoid prompts that uses, um, that could produce bias or discriminatory outputs. Um, again, bottom line is what you put into AI is what you're gonna get. Um, you're pretty much telling them what you want, what you need, and so there can be bias that's put into that. Um, and that's why there needs to be a human element to this. Ensuring fairness and sound judgment is, um, a core expectation. So again, AI can staff, can support staff productivity by handling routines, low, complex tasks. It can assist with drafting standard materials, summarizing contact, or organizing publicly available information. These are practical examples of how AI can enhance day-to-day workflows. Throughout all of these uses, again, human judgment and professional expertise remain essential. The policy makes clear that AI is a support tool, not a decision-maker. Employees must review, verify, fact-check all AI outputs before using any of them for any city purposes. And they remain fully responsible for the accuracy and appropriateness of the final work product. The policy also reinforces boundaries around data security. Staff may not enter sensitive, confidential, or regular, regulated information into any AI tools, nor store city data in unauthorized systems. This ensures that productivity gains do not compromise data protection or compliance. So now we're gonna move into a live demo. So I'm gonna show you, so I'm somebody who actively use ChatGPT every single day. You guys all know my personality. I can tend to be very direct. And I have found AI to really help soften my emails. Um, yes, it does. It helps quite a lot. Um, it helps softens my emails. It helps me, um, sometimes put my jumbled thoughts into words that actually make sense to somebody who may be listening to me. Um, and so I wanted to kind of show you the capabilities of what it can do. Um, this is my ChatGPT. Um, I use it every day. As you can see, I have a Mayor Washington voice. I have a Jason Hawley voice. I've actually created them to help me talk the way they talk, the way that they think. Um, yes, it's a really cool application. Um, and so it really helps take what I think Mayor Washington would want to say in his mayor's corner and help draft that for him, um, in his style, in his tone, use words that he would use. Um, and same with Jason, like when I'm drafting notes for him, it's in his style and his tone. And that's, and the word, he uses fancy words, words that I don't use, so I have to incorporate that into that. Um, and so yes, it's very helpful when I'm needing to draft for other people. But I just kind of wanted to show you, so we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna take a little trip back to seventeen seventy-five, the Boston Tea Party. Um, I don't know if you all remember this in fifth grade, but you learned about it. So we're gonna prompt our ChatGPT, um, I need you, see, and it sometimes this, I'm just gonna speak into it. I need you to create a high-level executive summary, but at fifth-grade level of what this document means. Let's see if it gets it. So, we're gonna prompt it with that and we're gonna copy and paste this into it. Oh my God. This sounded a lot cooler in my head. So you can drop, drag files into it, like policies, or if you have something that you're like, wow, that's forty-eight pages, what does that say? You can actually drag and drop it into this and it will provide an executive summary. So it tells you what the document is about. It tells you why it was made. Um, what does it say in simpler words? Because remember, I need it at a fifth-grade level. I need to be able to digest all of this stuff. Um, why does it matter during that time? And in short, it's gonna provide that summary of what's actually happening. Um, another way that we use ChatGPT in the communications team is, um, we actually will use it to create content for our social media. And, um, so I'll use a, a simple, another, um, example for you of what we would do with our comms team when we're trying to put something out on social and we want to invite the public. I need you to create a social media post about our American Canyon Magic of the Season event. This is a community event that is multicultural, so I need it to be inclusive to everybody and not be specific to just Christmas. And it needs to be engaging, fun, and welcoming, telling our residents about our community performances, our marketplace that's provided by the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, and so much more. Let's see if it got it. It looks like it. Let's see what it does. It's really an amazing tool. So as you can see, it's, it's, and sometimes it won't give you what you want and then you can tell it, that's not good, redo it. Um, and so let's take a look. It says, get ready for Magic of the Season. Let's see if it listened to what I said. Celebrate the warm joy and togetherness of our community of Magic of the Season where all cultures, traditions, and families are welcome. Join us for an evening filled with community performances showcasing the incredible talent of local youth, cultural groups, and neighbors. Seasonal marketplace presented by the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, perfect for discovering unique gifts and supporting local business, music, lights, food, and festive activities for all ages, and so much more around the corner. Bring your friends, your family, and your seasonal spirit as we celebrate everything that makes American Canyon such a vibrant and diverse place to call home. So this is just, it's very simple, um, example of how we can create content. And if we wanted to go further, we can actually tell ChatB- ChatGPT in this context to say, create a campaign around this, um, to get the information out, and it would actually do that. Um, so again, what you put in is what you get out. And there is that human element, right? Like you need to, yes, it's a tool. It's a productivity tool. It helps with efficiency. It helps with, if you're having writer's block and you don't have, you've been working all day and you're like, I need to get this out and I just, I, I just need something that's gonna put my words onto paper, but make it magical. Um, it, it can really do that. going to put my words onto paper, but make it magical," it can really do that for you, and it saves time and energy, and in some cases, makes us, in a lot of cases, makes us more efficient in what we're doing. All right. So tonight, so tonight we've outlined the environment where we are, what we are operating in, the growing presence of AI tools, and the wide range of city data systems we rely on, and the need for clear expectations that protect our information while supporting staff productivity. The draft policy is designed to establish those expectations, it provides guidance on how AI can be used responsibly in the workplace, reinforces our requirements around data protection, and creates a framework that can evolve as technology continues to change. Staff is seeking your feedback this evening and direction on the draft policy before we move forward, and we are welcome to any questions, comments, or feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ally, for that presentation, and now I know when you text me where that's coming from. And now I understand, so, "Man, she's so nice, I'm going to call her back," you know, now I know.
That's actually done by a human.
Okay. Councilmember Oro.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is an agenda topic that I wanted for this year, mainly because I work a lot with AI companies in my private life. We've turned that into an opportunity to speak on behalf of AI and the public sector. Spoke at Cal Cities last year on battling misinformation in the age of AI. I actually presented to that group and was, I submitted something and it was accepted. I recently wrote a byline article for government technology about who could champion AI within organizations. People in communications, like Director Ally Akita here, is doing that. I have actually talked to her extensively about this and shared some resources. I'm also part of the GovAI Coalition, which is spearheaded by San Jose, who's doing a lot of policy work around that, and they have an incredible amount of resources available. I've also got this little side gig called the Public Sector AI Lab, and I'll just state now that I'm not getting paid for any of this or around here, because we haven't been able to get that thing off the ground too much. So there's no financial conflict of interest, Ms. Highsmith, just want to let you know that. But here's what I would say about what's in front of us tonight, and first of all, I'd like to comment on the presentation. Thank you for doing the live presentation, and I would say to this council and the folks here, what you saw today was probably a great example of how people might be using it, and if we don't have an AI policy, people are going to use it anyway. Technology gets ahead of policy a lot. It was when I first joined this council, I think we were still on Windows 98, we're now moving up to cloud services and had our own services and things like that. Before this call, I came across a newsletter, one of the newsletters I had, a journalist wrote and shared something, he was at the Tech Equity AI Summit, and a woman by the name of Kathy Vidal, she, I'll just read what he wrote. "Kathy Vidal, who's the former head of the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office, made a point about AI that stuck with me. We can't expect people to adopt new technology responsibly if we don't show them how to use it. She wasn't talking about creating training manuals, her message was that innovation has outpaced regulation, and the U.S. is deploying AI systems in workplaces, schools, and cities faster than people can adopt. Without clear policies, standards, education, and accountability, the benefits of AI stay in the hands of the few." And that's why I wanted it here in front of us this year, because people are using it today, whether we like it or not, and the guidelines that have been drafted here as a draft and to give the feedback to you is really, I love it because it's in the most simplest format. We're not trying to tackle every technology policy out there, data retention, security, you know, application development, or anything else like that. It really is just focused about, "Hey, folks, we know you're going to use AI, we know it's a powerful tool, we know it can screw you up too, so here's some guidelines that we can provide." And I think, you know, I don't have too much more to add to the policy, I think there's a lot on there, and I also like the brevity of it, but there's one thing that I don't think your presentation hit on too well, and there's a spot on the one-pager that I would add, and this is something that, in the training that I've done, in the talks that I've done, you don't just take AI for granted, you take it as a tool, and you must have human intervention in it. Do not make a request and spit it out and send it out. You have to sit there and be with it for a while and see if it sounds like you. See if it is correct and responsive. It does hallucinate. Listen, the scientists that actually have built this don't know why it does the things it does. It's set a lot of parameters, but as you continue to engage with it, it kind of gets a mind of its own. It kind of really is scary at times. And, you know, Ally's got her own personal AIs, it's changed the way I've worked. I've hired less people in my private practice because I can use AI as a tool and a benefit. And when I think about organizations like the City of American Canyon, I'm not saying we're going to hire less people, but we can definitely become more efficient. I'll give you an example that Mr. Hawley and I actually had, was that this year, right? Like early this year or late last year, sometime? We were in a, we were looking at an agreement that was complex, had a lot of words, and we couldn't decide, we couldn't make clear sense of who was responsible for what. I said, "Give me a copy of that in a Word format where I can copy and paste this legal language." And we, I put it in there, and we had our answer within five minutes, and the way that it explained it and understood it actually helped us a lot, and we both looked at each, I think he was flabbergasted, and I was like, "Well, now it makes sense, because you weren't making any sense, and this wasn't making any sense." So it helped us out a lot, and I think that's where the, that's where the gains come in, productivity and understanding, but it is a tool and it is not you. And so the one thing that I would say, you had a key reminder on your one-pager, it was the first bullet under key reminders, you're responsible for your work even if AI helps, and even if AI is wrong, right? And I think that needs to be added, and that's the message that we say all the time. Use it, don't trust it, or trust but verify, because it will, you'll get caught.
A quick question, I just, when Councilmember Oro just said that he needed it in a Word document, you took something that wasn't a Word document and put it on there, so you could...
You can do a lot of things.
No, it was a PDF, and I just didn't feel like cutting and pasting it, and I also kind of wanted to mess with it, but you can actually take a whole PDF in there, you could do a URL and do an image, and so, you know, another thing, these things are improving all the time. Every week, there's some new advancement. Google came out with Gemini today that's, they're calling it PhD reasoning, almost, like it's more advanced than ChatGPT now, which almost prompted me to go, go check it out. So they're continuing to advance it on a regular basis. A lot of it's based on, you know, obviously computing power and what they're doing, but a lot of it's based on how they program it, and they don't really know, and they just keep tinkering with it, and they're, sometimes the gains are incremental, sometimes they're exponential.
Nice. City Manager Hawley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, since we're telling cool stories of utilizing these tools, was looking at some deeds, doing a little bit of research for one of our projects that we have, and trying to understand property dedications and right-of-way, and back, you know, last century, the beginning of the last century, before there were typewriters, people wrote those property transactions in calligraphy, and so there's an entire mountain of deeds at Napa County Office of Records that are all in calligraphy, English, but calligraphy very hard to read, and I said, "Well, I wonder what ChatGPT can do with calligraphy," and something, copy and paste image, boom, it's all readable English in milliseconds, it felt like, and so it was just sort of interesting, you're like, "Wow, it can take that," and you had to go back and verify those pieces, because that was, but still, it was, you start looking at that stuff, "I can't even read that calligraphy," and now it's put it out, so it was a lot of cool applications.
Before I go to public comment, can you open up that thing that you just had? I just want to see if you could do something for me real quick.
Sure.
Yeah. This will prove something to me. The word is John, J-A-W-N. What does that mean?
The typewriter on this is a little wonky, so please forgive me. J-A-W-N.
J-A-W-N.
I should have said, "What does John mean?" It's slang from Philadelphia.
I believe it.
It basically means anything, place, person, or event.
Okay, I believe it. Okay, okay, well, now with that said, I'll open it up for public comment, because I believe it.
But remember, add John into Mayor Washington's voice now, because...
Yeah, I'm going to remember that, that Philadelphia slang.
Okay, okay.
I'm going to say ChatGPT is a pretty good John, man.
Yeah, that's a pretty good John there. I'm opening up a public comment, any public comment in the House? No one here? How about online?
There is no one online.
So that John didn't bring anybody's interest, huh? Okay, okay. So we'll close public comment, and I'd like to return for item number 11 for council. This is just a review or feedback.
I was just going to throw one last thing in there. A lot of the policy talks about, you know, don't plug in sensitive information, and that, that's enforced by, "We are all responsible and we don't plug in," so I mean, that's the only thing that concerns me, is theoretically, somebody could say, "Well, I'm going to cut and paste all this stuff because I want to do something," and either, you know, probably inadvertently plug in security data. What happens if that happens? Is it, you know, is there a way to reverse it, or is it not necessarily in the...
It's in there, and that's why it's really important that we set these boundaries and we identify what sensitive information is. Right now, we don't have any boundaries. Anybody can put, you can type in my name and say whatever you want, and then it's out, it's kind of like the internet, it's out into oblivion, and then it could potentially pop up into somebody else's AI feedback. Because again, it's learning, it's constantly learning, it takes the things that you put in, and it generates, and it can help other people get information. So it's extremely important that we have boundaries that identify what sensitive information is, and that's why we felt that it was appropriate to bring a data policy forward in conjunction with AI, because we don't have anything. And currently, right now, we have multiple systems that have a lot of sensitive information in it, and to my knowledge, we haven't had any breach of that, which we're very fortunate because we have responsible staff that understand that, that are managing those systems, but accidents can happen. And so that's why we really felt it was appropriate to not only do an AI policy, but also do a data policy, and that's why it's written the way that it is, because it's, it is, it is simple, the language is simple. We purposefully did that so that way staff could digest it and understand it, and understand what is acceptable, what's not acceptable. As part of this process, and I did not share, I had looked at other people's AI policies, and they were overly complicated, and in my opinion, did not make sense, because it just went over my head. And so I really wanted to take an approach of making something that was simple and digestible and easy to read, and then also create that, that one-pager that we can go off of, because boundaries are important and identifying our responsibility, because a lot of us are, a lot of us are exposed to different things, and we already inherently know that, but accidents can happen.
Councilmember Joseph, if I may just jump in, there, this is an AI policy, there are data privacy policies about those things, and like, as soon as you start mixing those things up, and like, I think you should have them all, right? Obviously, the data retention policies, but the AI policy is its own thing, data is a part of that, that you shouldn't be sharing with AI or plugging into the system, because that personal, particularly personal identifiable information that our residents have shouldn't be shared unless they're already public documented.
Yeah, no, I agree, I just wanted to wrap my head around, how do we enforce it, other than just educate everybody and say, "You've got to be careful, don't include this."
Yeah, and I think that's, that's kind of, you know, AI right now has no bounds, and if you have somebody in there that's testing the waters and doesn't, you know, and they have access to things, they may put in customer information, and that's why we wanted to have this policy to set those boundaries. I'm not going to speak to what we would do to an employee, I think that would be more appropriate for Jason to answer, but we do have processes and procedures when things and policies are not followed, and that usually, there's a progressive discipline process, and that gets, you know, that department head works with Jason and Human Resources and all that stuff.
Understood, thank you. Okay, and so Ally, do you think you have enough feedback? I know Councilmember Oro gave quite a bit, so I mean, do you have enough to move forward with what you need to do?
I think so. I really appreciate all of your time this evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to bring this forward for your feedback.
Thank you. Did you read that on AI?
So, I did not, but I did also want to note, just so that you are aware, as part of the policy is you're supposed to source who helps you, and so if you noticed in the footnote, I did source ChatGPT to help me write this policy. And like I said, I did pull in other people's policies, and I took Councilmember Oro's advice, and I went on to GovAI, even pulled their policy to see how we matched up, and I'm pretty pleased with what we have in front of us tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Ally. So now, we'll move on to the management and staff oral reports. I didn't see anything on the agenda, but do you have anything to add, Mr. Hawley?
I'm saying yes.
I do, I'm back. Feel like it's the Ally Show tonight. Okay, Mr. Mayor and council, I have quite a few updates to provide to you and just what's going on around town. On November 19th, we have a Fire Protection District Meeting at 6:30 PM. On November 20th, there is a Planning Commission Meeting at 6:30 PM. City offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on November 27th and 28th, but don't worry, we have our virtual city hall available to help and assist you if you need anything. And then on December 3rd, the Napa Valley Tourism Business Improvement District Meeting is at 11:00 AM, and then we also, that evening, have OSAT's Commission at 6:30. Looking ahead a little bit further, I just want to remind all of you that we have Magic of the Season at Shenandoah Park on December 5th, and this is going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. This is in partnership with the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, where they are setting up our holiday marketplace. Great opportunity to support local small business and get those gifts for the holiday season. We'll have food trucks, we'll have community performances, and the tree lighting is at 6:30. I do expect all of you there. And then lastly, on that following morning, which is December 6th, ACCPF will be hosting their 15th Annual Reindeer Run down at Wetlands Edge from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Anything else, Ms. Hawley?
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
We'll move on to our mayor, council, comments, and committee reports. We'll start it with you, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Well, I turned mine in, so you can check it out online. I do want to remind everybody that, A, there'll be Seize Candy for Sale at Magic of the Season, so if you're getting into a sugar fix, we'll take care of you, and then the Parole Festival will be that following day, December 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Michel Logic Center. These are two Art Foundation events that are planned, so be there or be square.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Oro.
I don't have anything to report, sir, but I do want to give an update. I had addressed this council that work is requiring me to be out December 2nd, which is our first December meeting, and I was going to do it remotely. I'm learning today that the plans have changed, and I probably won't be remote at all, and I will probably miss that meeting on the 2nd. And I'll give an update on the, we have the city council committee assignments that day, and I'll just do a written note. The note will say, "Don't change a thing for me, thank you."
Okay, we'll be adding some stuff to you for sure.
Uh-oh, that's danger.
What an opportunity. Councilmember Lametina.
Just want to mention that over the weekend, we had the Citizens Academy graduation, and the, their job was to plant a bunch of beautiful... and the, their job was to plant a bunch of beautiful plants in front of the mural at the Mecha Logic Center, if I said that right. And it turned out great, and that was in partnership with the Arts Foundation. Councilmember Joseph was there, and it was really great to see everyone really excited, and, you know, talking about how they learned and what they thought was happening in the city, wasn't really happening in the city, you know, they learned the layers and everything. So it was really good to hang out with the graduates, and it was sunny that day, and it was great.
Thank you, Mid-City Nursery, for the donation of the plants.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So last week, we had the Veterans Day, so I wanna thank City Manager Hawley, Deputy City Manager Akita for Communications Team and Staff. I think that went out really, really well, thank you so much for helping me prepare for that as well. On Friday, I believe it's Donaldson Way, they'll be hosting two plays called The Barber of Seville. It'll be at nine o'clock and ten o'clock, but it's gonna be at the Girls and Boys Club. Again, that's this Friday. We did have an opportunity to attend a comedy show here in American Canyon at the Boys and Girls Club. I think most of us that are sitting at the DIAS were in attendance there. And had the opportunity to, myself and Vice Mayor Joseph, to go to ACMs to see the revamped, the track and field for the ATW Manager from NVUSD. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I also submitted my report, but I wanna thank Councilmember Cruz for his presentation at the Veterans Day and for Vice Mayor to stand in for me. I apologize, I had a work commitment that I had to be out of, out of town for, and then even for the Citizens Academy. I couldn't make it because I was obviously at the beauty pageant on Saturday for Ms. Napa and for Ms. Vallejo Tri-City. So thank you for sitting in for me on all those events. Nothing else to report, so I'll go to future agenda items. Any future agenda items from the council? Seeing none, we have concluded our business for this evening, and we are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.